It takes an universal.
I think it'd be good for.
We're on the.
I need an extra few hours. I use that whole thing down stairs. Very easy. But there's you say.
Just started from recording.
From Florida.
I'm listening.
Welcome to.
Sometimes.
Welcome to the.
Any of you ask.
I know.
The muddy.
I mean, right now.
He's ordering a new PC to do anything. The files is one step.
Kind of anywhere.
You want to. I almost. So I actually said so instead of.
Rob, would you hand me a copy of the agenda?
Yeah, I got two.
All right, he's got never mind. I don't believe that.
The recording has started, so you're ready to go anytime.
Okay. Agenda, please. Thank you. Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It's May eighth. We're meeting at six thirty PM in the Enfield DPW room. Uh, looks like tonight we are all here except for Brad, who told us that he would not be. Um. And I guess Whitney will have to elevate you to be an alternate if we take any votes. Uh, so let's take attendance first. Members present, starting with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Phil Vermeer.
Tim Jennings.
Rob.
Staff, Rod Taylor.
Whitney Banker.
Okay. Um. So we're calling the meeting to order, uh, public comments. Anyone here for anything that is not listed on the agenda? Dan, you're, I know what you're here for and.
Just to listen.
Observe.
Listen. Wonderful.
That's on our guest list.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no hearings. This is a work session, first. Meeting of the month. Uh, we have no conceptuals. Do we have a select board report from Mr. Russell?
Sure. So we had a good meeting on Monday. Uh, had public hearings regarding the sale of property, the Johnston Drive and Shed Street properties. Uh, people have heard the Methodist Hill property was redeemed by the, our owners. So that's. We got the check for it. So that's now their private property again. Um, and we'll have another public hearing in two weeks. Again, just, uh, for Johnston Drive and Shed Street because that's the legal requirement. Um, on the staffing side, we're going to hopefully have a fully staffed police department soon. Um, they certified officers applied for the open position. Wendy Hall's well underway. Um, Lakeside Park parking lot is torn up. You'll probably notice that.
I see that.
Underway as well. Uh, the, oh, there's a Lebanon is moving forward with a grant for. The overall Meskoma watershed study. That's something we'd be sort of tangentially involved with Lebanon. We're administrate, administer it. Uh, but obviously the watershed comes and Enfield and we'd be supportive of it. Um. And, yeah, uh, we authorized the public safety building contract to be completed. So. That should get underway in the next month or so as well.
Okay.
Questions if people have them.
Questions, comments. Okay, legislative report, uh, uh, some of you may have read the Omnibus Housing Bill went down to defeat. Um. That was the one that I spoke about at our previous meeting. And I gave my opinion and I apologize for not asking board members for theirs. But since it's a dead issue now, I think we can just skip over that. Um, upcoming bill at session tomorrow. Will enable towns and cities to do, um. Sewer districts. Um, that. Span sewer and water that span more than a single political division. Which is to say, we have it now. But if this bill passes and, um. It. Yeah, I, I can't remember if it's enabling. It probably is, but, um. If it passes, that could open the way if Lebanon is willing. For Canaan to simply tap into our sewer system to expand that potential development that Rob informed us of last week. They happen, may not. Um. We are. In the home stretch on legislation for this year. There's still a hundred bills that have to be dealt with, over a hundred. So. Things are a little bit crazy. That's all. Any questions? Rob?
No questions for me. Now I'll give you a quick, uh, update. Uh. I think I indicated my last, uh, our last meeting that real estate seems to have gotten a little hotter in Enfield lately. So the inventory has bumped up. Things are selling quickly. Erica sold his place with the newly subdivided lot. Cross fingers.
We haven't closed, so.
Okay. Eric, I just signed the Mylar for it. Okay, thank you. Still have to make the decision though.
Yes. Yeah, the Mylar will be recorded. We'll send it up on Friday this week. We'll just wait for checks. Uh, from the town. Um. Uh, like I said, uh, you know, every place that sells, we get the call, you know, like people call like, what can I do? What can I do? Uh, you know, there was one that was just sold on the end of Shaker Hill and four A, the old, uh, Blue Ox. Farm location with a really pretty house.
Did that sell?
That's sold.
Nice.
Yep. Took a lot of calls on that. That was, that was probably more than almost any other place in town that I've, in, in recent memory that we got calls on. Think particularly because it's in the very big flood zone. There's Knox River. Uh, implications pretty much all across that land. It's a pretty good sized piece of land. It's like sixteen acres or something like that. Um, and you guys will recall, it was one of. Enfield's premium farms for a little while. Blue Ox was an organic vegetable operation. I think was growing. Vegetables for the co-op food stores like Kale and things like that. So kind of missed that, but, uh, the gentleman that called to tell me that his offer had been accepted. And like a really nice guy. He's got a job lined up in Hanover and his wife's going to be at Hitchcock and. Very excited about that place. It's like I said, beautiful.
Is he a tent farm or?
I don't think so. I don't think so. They're probably just being push hogged or. I think Scott Johnson actually might have come over and ha- hate it with his farm equipment for, uh, feed. So. But, uh, as I said, the, the inventory, if you look on, you know, if you just plug in Google Enfield, New Hampshire real estate and even look on Realtor.com and see. Places for sale. And as I said, they, they don't sit long. They seem to move pretty quickly. There's a couple. Right just down the street from you on Shaker Hill that seem to be snatched up.
Yeah.
Um. We are in sort of frantic final preparations for our two forums coming up tomorrow and Saturday. We did have a little, a little snafu with the flyer. We all looked at the flyer numerous times. Supposed to be ten to two, but we missed the one in front of the two. So, and I was sorry, it's supposed to be ten to twelve. Now it's ten to two because we didn't put the one in front of the two. Um. The contractor, I made them aware. So we're just planning to staff it for the extra couple of hours in case people trickle in on those, uh, extra hours. The only flying, the one I was just telling David about is that. That's the community building and it turns out there's a rental right after us at twelve o'clock on Saturday. So we'll have to sort of move to the downstairs level, I think, at the halfway point. Which will, which will give us some logistical problems, but nothing we can't handle. I think, did Kate put it up there?
We, uh.
We changed.
And.
Erased the one.
They had the flyer with me on Monday.
Yep.
And was reading off of that.
Yes, yes, yes. So, uh, we've been printing. David took care of a lot of the professional printing. I've been printing tons of the sort of le- letter sized handouts. We got a big stack of stuff. Got a sound system. We got projection and projection screen and we've been working with resilient. So it's. I'm confident it's going to be, uh, well set up. We're, we're here's hoping for a good turnout. We sent twenty-six hundred mailers out to every. Mailing address in Enfield and, uh. That seemed to go well and we've used all the other avenues at our disposal from listserv to. Facebook to, uh, Town Newsletter to, uh, bulletin boards, you know, everything we can think of to get the word out. So there's no reason people don't know about it. Unless you're asleep in a. Uh, dark room somewhere that, uh, you, you should have heard about it. So here's hoping we have good participation in that. Um. I just signed up today for the New Hampshire Planners Summer Conference. Is in June in Keene. This looks like a pretty neat agenda. Some stuff that Keene's got going on. Keene's a pretty. Pretty with a town. So we'll be getting to go down there and see what they're working on with some really, uh. Sort of focused subgroups to go around the city and see what they're up to. Each year that I've gone to that, since I've been working here, I've always picked up a lot of really good stuff. Couple of years ago was in Franklin. Last year it was in Plymouth. So they try to move it around and, uh, you know, actually the, I think the most valuable thing is making relationships with other. Planners and contractors where I met Steve Woodman. The gentleman that we're working with now and Mark Fugere. So I think it's productive. It's not super expensive for us to go. It's like sixty bucks. To sign up and, and that. So I'll be going to that in June. Um. It's been busy here at Public Works. We're doing a lot of stuff. We're working, as Eric said, with a contractor on the. Mesa Lake Side Park. That's grant funded project. That is going to replace the parking lot and increase the nature scape down there with hiking trails and. Outdoor classroom and all kinds of cool stuff. And I was involved in that when we got the grant. I helped write that grant for LWCF, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And so exciting, but it's also a little stressful. Cause it's also peak time for that park to be in use. So some people are upset. Oh, why are you doing this now? Well. Month ago it was all mud, so we couldn't really do it then. Hopefully by July should be. Less disruptive. The parking lot's the biggest thing. We can't get in there right now. Salem Club's kind of upset, but. Um. But, uh, no, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on and, uh, it's busy. So, uh, and as I said, speculatively, uh, still getting calls. We're still working. With a possible developer on the Bob La Croix lot. That's kind of proceeding at a very slow pace. Uh, we got, uh, in. Next week. The fourteenth. So a week from last night is the continuation of the Larrabee Farm hearing at the ZBA. Be the third, uh, meeting for those two variances. And I think there'll be a vote then because we're, we're, we're looking at the ninety day window closing. Where we have to make a decision one way or the other. As, as regulated by the state. So, um. That's pretty big. Talking to the developers and working with, uh. Board members from the ZBA and so forth and just kind of working through that, um. Conservation Commission, I'm helping them with stuff. So they had maybe last week. They lost a member. So if you know anybody good for Conservation Commission, we could use a new member. I think, uh. What's her name? She resigned.
Lee Davis.
Lee. It was no longer on that board. So. That's what's going on. I mean, any questions? Fire them away.
Questions?
Uh, just doing. My usual encouraging of, uh, in. The, uh, formal report of building permits.
Yeah. If, if it's okay with you, I'd like to do that once a month. Is that okay?
That's fine. I didn't really expect it tonight. I'm just.
Yep. Uh, my, I was, I, that popped into my head earlier today, but Liam was in a, he was in a training all day and, uh, Chantel, who is our sort of. Um. Admin, she was out today too. She went to a welfare training in Plymouth. So I will definitely, we'll, we'll be adding a new column to the Excel spreadsheet for you to classify the permit type.
Thanks.
Yep.
Would there be objection if that gets timed to appear at our work session?
The first though.
Yeah. So a month from now.
Okay.
That okay with you, Tim?
Good.
Good.
Uh, okay. I, I guess Rob has pretty well covered what's going on with the. Grant, the hot grant in the master plan project. This is the big weekend. We do need people from the planning board to volunteer. To sign up, to talk to people, answer questions. Who is available?
I can do Thursday.
You can, Linda can do Thursday.
Thursday.
I, I maybe can't be there right at six. Cause I have a workman coming to look at some things I need done at five thirty, but maybe I can be there. If not, it'll only be a few minutes after.
Okay, so Linda and Phil, um.
Could be there both, uh, both sessions, but just till noon. I didn't.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay.
I can be there Saturday.
Yeah, I could be there.
And I think I'm pretty surprised.
Yeah, Brad said Saturday. I'm down for Saturday. So.
Either one.
My, my, I have a two Saturday.
You want, or I can do them. I can do the Thursday or Saturday or both.
If you would like to do both, that would be great.
Okay.
If you want to do one, just pick Saturday.
We, uh, we're going to be a little frantic because we can, we can get in there till five.
What I'm saying is I can do twelve to two. If nobody can do twelve to two on Saturday.
I will be there.
I, I will be there for the whole thing. I, I committed to it. Um. My next thing on Saturday is over. In Rutland for my grandkids' play. So that gives me plenty of time.
Okay, I'll be there.
Um. Another thing going on Saturday, and I honestly can't remember if you folks got notices on it or not. Saturday is the annual, uh, spring training for planning boards and zoning.
I think I sent that out. Yeah.
I think you, I think.
You did.
And the cool thing with that is they're recording it, so it will be available at your convenience.
So if you sign up tomorrow or Friday. You can then access the recordings.
Oh, you have to sign up to access the recording?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to give you a link. That's what they normally do.
Them looked very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. They do. It's just that I can't be at three places at once.
I.
Or four, because there's, oh, I know what there was. The other thing was the baseball game in Manchester. For which, um. Someone. Bought a block of tickets. Whatever. Okay, uh, new business. Lebanon Classic Road Discussion. That has popped up again. Um. The Patch family has come up with a new proposal, which the Lebanon City Council. Is going to be discussing and George Sykes, who is one of the counselors. Uh, and also a legislature slator button hold me a week ago. And said, I would like to know what Enfield's standoffness is. So there is a map in this packet. Don't recall what page it is.
It's, well, it's after the pages. It's, it's in the end.
Yeah, one ninety-three through.
Like one ninety-six.
If everyone else has one, I'd love to see one in color. Yeah, it could trade you.
So look to the next one if you could, Dan. Keep going.
There's another one here, right?
Yeah.
Keep going.
E- that is the one.
That's the one.
Okay, so what page is that?
Uh, one nine five.
Okay. Rob, you have extra copies for our guests. At least one extra copy. So. The proposal, as I understand it.
Are we?
Yeah, you're on the right one.
One.
Yep.
Can I hold this up just to show the people? As I understand it, the proposal is. To discontinue completely. This class six road or trail or whatever it is. And build a connector. Um, from this one over to here. Now, I, I've been trying to put things.
Not.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So this trail here is going to be discontinued. It's the orange one with the black dots.
Yeah, okay.
They'll build, the Patches have offered to build a connector between this trail and this trail. Which will allow people to go from here. Through the connector. All the way down to one twenty. Now. I've been looking at different maps and I am about ninety-five percent positive that. This section.
Hmm.
And I'm not sure that the road name is correct. But that section goes through. The Methodist Hill Road property that the town just returned to its rightful owner. For which the ultimate. Plan is for it to go into conservation.
That was the plan. That was.
It's no longer the plan?
It's private property.
Okay.
Nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Right.
Town has nothing to do, the, the rumor mill says that that still is likely to happen. Um, so that basically leaves us with one access. Um. To that large tract of land which goes down to Route one twenty. And. I don't know if anybody actually read the report that was put together on the Methodist Hill property. But that report stated that the Methodist Hill property. Connected to a large. Rather unique, multiple use tract of land. That went down to Route one twenty by way of trails.
Right.
So the question is what. Position, if any, does the town of Enfield Planning Board want to take? On the proposed closure of. The trail that connects with the road. That's in Enfield. And Dan, the name of right there is that, that's.
McAllister.
That is McAllister.
That's the McAllister Road.
Okay.
Um. I guess my issue with it is it's, the closing also does something else. Which means that our connection, you could, you now will not be able to go McAllister to Atherton. Because Atherton is also. A part, part of that is an Enfield road. It appears as though they're going to close Atherton at Dirk where they're putting in the new connector.
Mm-hmm.
You know? I don't, I mean, my feeling is you shouldn't be closing them, but. And if you read, if you read their proposal. Their big reason is because they, the sap lines, they want to keep low. So that they don't have to put them up. At the same time, they say horses can go down it. Now I'm sure, I'm sorry, but unless the horses are three feet high, the horses can't go down it. They're going to jump them. Yeah.
And at the same time, they retain the ability to put. Sap lines under or over.
Right.
The trails.
Yeah.
So the whole thing seems a little inconsistent to me.
There, the Patches are, are saying that they're not, they were never legally classics wells. Even though they've been there two hundred years.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't, I mean, my feeling is from Enfield's standpoint is it surely help, doesn't help us.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, I understand that they're trying to run a business, but. I think Rob would say good business practices. You either put them up above. Or you put them. In conduit under.
Right.
However. I would like to mention that. Before they ran those sap lines. The Patches asked the town. Uh, the city of Lebanon and got permission to do it.
Yeah.
And then Lebanon, they ran thirty thousand dollars worth of lines and then Lebanon said. They took back the permission.
Mm-hmm.
So it isn't that they were being inconsiderate. Like, if I were in their business, I'd have great sympathy for them.
Yeah, I went to the city council meeting. Back at, it was two, three years ago. No, it was, I would say it was, it was less than a year, but not more than a year. Was, uh, you went two or three years ago, David, didn't you? You went to a city council meeting?
Yeah, it was during.
Covid.
During Covid or before Covid.
So I want to say this was like.
Long time ago.
Maybe late summer, early fall last year.
Right.
And, you know, I got to hear the presentation from the Patches attorney. And right now, basically there, the, there's a case and this, the Patches sued the city. And the judge in that case basically ordered both sides to mediate essentially, try to come up with some kind of a solution out of court. And the attorney for Patches. Sort of, you know, outlined their case, which I think has some merit. As Linda's indicating and for other reasons too. Um, and their. Sort of proposal was a settlement to, to offer up some of these other. Um, trails. One of my concerns and disappointments is the, it used to be a pretty major snowmobile trail that went through them. That's been, that's been closed. Um. And I think I'm also concerned about any of these new trails that they're proposing. They don't, they don't, no snowmobile traffic. It's. It's non-powered vehicles that, that, on all of them. Um, you know much about snowmobiles. Snowmobiles are largely, uh, light touch on trails. I mean. In terms of the ground contact, they're, they're on the snow. They're on the, not on the ground. Now there's arguments that can be made. Snowmobiles are loud and belching smoke or whatever. I can, I can buy that, but I'm just worried that it's, you know, incremental, more loss. We've, we've been fighting. As snowmobilers for years and years trying to maintain. Unfortunately, there's some bad apples out there that have certainly spoiled things for everybody. But. If you talk to. Well, talk to the Meskoma Lakeside Park people here in town, the snowmobile clubs have been excellent to work with and they're unbelievable stewards of the land. And they just do lots of work to maintain trail networks that are available year round, not just with snowmobiles. And so that's a concern of mine. I don't know how that plays into things. But again, I think I would echo what Dan's saying too. I just.
They're also.
We've been trying to protect our rights.
Right. As they're also proposing in their proposal, two parking spaces in the parking lot down there.
Yes, at the bottom of the.
At the bottom of Methodist Hill.
Yeah.
Well. I don't think two spaces is enough because there's going to be more than two people.
That's a joke.
On those trails most weekends.
Yeah.
Um. But. I mean, we can. I, I guess my big thing is we're going to lose the connection between Atherton and McAllister.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Because of this.
And the question is, how would you guys like your, your opinion to be communicated? Do you think it's a letter to the city council? Or do you want another representative to, to attend the meeting to basically stand up? Cause that's what happened. I, I went in and I actually stood up and sort of communicated what you guys had said numerous times.
Right.
And basically what, what are, what we sent, the original thing, we sent a letter.
We sent a very strong.
Nice. To, uh, to Macamare, the mayor. Uh, and city councillor basically saying. It's kind of a shame to give up on public access.
Has anybody done a cost estimate of what, what it would cost to raise the lines or put the lines under the trail? So. I, I mean, that's a solution.
That is. I think what Linda says, it, it's probably fairly expensive. Once you have the stuff all installed.
Yeah.
But, uh.
I mean, from my point of view, the town of Enfield's position hasn't changed.
No, not at all.
The original letter still.
Yeah.
Represents what? How this board deals and, I mean, I, on a personal side, I don't think. The solution to a poor decision, you know, a mistake was made. And the solution is not to take the public access and give it to a private business.
Yeah.
You know, was a mistake made? Sure. But you, the solution is not to. Take away something that's been there for two hundred years.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
The attorney would tell you, I mean, I, I agree with you absolutely. The attorney for the patches would say. Sure, you can have that attitude. You, you might lose in court. We think we've got a really strong case that you lose everything.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, he's paid to have that. I would expect him to have that position.
Exactly. Yeah.
So. But honestly, like what they're offering is not much more than losing everything.
I said.
Right.
Right.
Really not offering.
Exactly.
Right, they're. It, they're, what they're offering loses basically everything for the town of Enfield.
Right.
Well, and. Almost everything. And it loses the majority of what. Folks accessing it from one twenty would want, because you no longer have a loop. Yeah. No longer go dirty road to Atherton Road. Via McCa- and then, then a little bit of McAllister.
Right.
Connected around.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little confused where this parking lot is.
It's going to be at the base of Methodist Hill.
Oh, all the way down there?
Yeah, yeah.
Where that yellow is?
Yeah, yeah, for two cars.
Oh, but that.
It has to be, yeah, it's going to be at the base of Methodist Hill because that's the only piece that's in Lebanon.
That's a very short piece. I don't know. It's a very short piece, I don't know. They just repaved it, they ground it all up and repaved it, it was the worst section of Lebanon Road in the whole city. And it was bad and they finally just reclaimed it and repaved it.
Right.
And actually, the town of Enfield is gonna be repaving.
The rest.
Methodist Hill, so it should be a lot, a lot nicer for sure.
So this is down at Barden Hill?
The Barden Hill, the Barden Hill Road Trail is where the, where the parking lot's going to be.
So it doesn't even really access.
It doesn't access the other ones.
Okay. I was trying to make it up here.
Do we wanna send another letter? Do we wanna show up? In person at the hearing?
What the, the letter said. Summarize the high points.
I.
I could print you a copy right now.
Could you do that?
I can also summarize it too, if you want me to.
Why, why don't you summarize for?
Yeah, basically, we were, we were opposed to, uh, the loss of public rights of way. Class six roads, uh, you know, the history there was they, they were throwing them up a hundred years ago, before zoning was implemented. As a way to control development, as if the class six road was there, somebody could come along and upgrade it back to a town maintained road. At their expense and build on it. So towns looked at it like, oh, let's get rid of them and get, throw them up. And that was kind of a shame because, you know, later on, people were like, geez, it's too bad we get, we got rid of that road, it was like a nice little way to go. I mean, we can, you can walk on these roads, you can horseback ride, bike, you can snowmobile, you can do all that stuff. And, uh, so the class six roads that are left, to me, are treasures for the, for the communities that have them. And so it was our opinion that if Lebanon gave up on their class six roads, we basically leave Enfield's class six roads as roads to nowhere. Literally at the town line, it just ceases to exist.
Literally with a gate, with the current proposal.
Yep, yeah. So we were opposed to that, like, what's the sense in doing that? I mean. You know, the, the, the carrying cost to the city of Lebanon for a class six road?
Zero.
Zero dollars, cause it is just that, it's an unmaintained town road. But it's still guarantees rights of way that people can go down for recreation.
And when the Lebanon Class Six Road Committee recommended as a. I guess reasonable compromise that the. Class six roads be reclassified into trails.
Class A trail.
Class A trails. Um, that was something that I think we, we as the Town of Enfield Planning Board. Thought was a reasonable compromise that we could live with.
Yeah, the, the class A trail continues to be public access rights of way. But there is a limitation, no motorized vehicles on a class A trail, so you can't. You can't ride a Jeep or a snowmobile or a four wheeler or any of those kind of things down it. I'm not even sure. If class A trails, if you can ride a horseback on, maybe you can. But of course, horse, horse hooves, you know, are also very damaging to trails. They can make just as big of a mess as a Jeep cannibals, you know, they're, they can really stomp it up if it's soft and muddy. So.
But the, the, the. The. Maple sap lines also became an issue because of people cross country skiing on it.
Right, with a little snow, it kinda.
Right.
Gets you right here. So. But I mean, even with the lines across, if it were still class six, you could still go under the, I mean, as I.
Yeah.
On somebody on foot, you could still have a right to be there.
Right.
If they throw it up. Literally, they're gonna be like, nobody's allowed out there. Literally, it's gonna be no trespass. So that means no access for anybody.
Right.
It's like, you know, and that's a, that's a sadness for me. I hate seeing the posted signs going up around.
And, and the maple lines could be raised high enough that you could drive a truck under it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, logistically, it's gonna be a hard thing, they have like fifty thousand taps up there now, so. It's, it's logistically, it's a big job to put them all overhead now. Um, if they had designed it from the front end to do that, it would be, you know, wouldn't have been anywhere near as.
Where they only would have had half a dozen crossings.
Exactly, that's where now they've got so many. And go over with the sap ladder.
Yeah, right.
Volume over, but now they've got all the laterals, so it's basically. Thousands of lines.
They've run it like it was there, it's for the last twenty five years.
Our master plan also does call out public open spaces and connecting trail networks. On page twenty seven.
I'd be happy to work with David and draft a new letter if you guys are, uh, agreeable. We can bring it back to the next meeting later this month. I think the, the, the Lebanon City Council will meet on this in June. So we've got a little bit of time.
Yeah.
And we could also at that time decide if anybody wants to go. It's fun to see how the sausage gets made in another, other town.
I, I, I think we, I think, you know, somebody should go, um. I don't know the exact date, but my schedule will be hopefully a little bit lighter than it is today come June. And I was certainly, um.
June five.
June fifth, thanks.
You got a beautiful new space for the city council down in the basement of the.
Yeah.
City Hall.
What day of the week is that, Dan? Do you know?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So that will be the first Wednesday in June.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're like our select board, they need first and the third week of the month. But they need a Wednesdays for, for, it's on Mondays.
Okay, so, um, we'll work on that and Rob and I will have something. Next meeting.
Any input from the public?
Yeah.
Public, any thoughts?
But we don't have any control if they decide.
Oh, we have.
No, we have absolutely no control.
And in the case that they do decide to declassify that. Then what would we want to do with McAllister Road? Downgrade it to a trail?
I mean, it's pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
You don't have to do anything.
It's not worth doing anything and Lebanon's gonna put a gate at the end of it.
Turn around at the gate.
Yeah.
Right, back and forth. That's what's gonna happen, yeah.
So that's kinda where we're at. Uh, George Sykes did tell me that the city of Lebanon. Either has or is working on a counter proposal, but I haven't seen it. Maybe I can find out more about that tomorrow.
If you could get them to, the ability for us to connect Atherton to McAllister. Yeah, that would, that would make a difference.
Well, that sounds okay, but that's a stretch of land there that we have no idea that's even feasible.
Well, no, there, what I mean is them not put sap lines across that, that small amount of Atherton. Nor to press get from McAllister to Atherton.
Aren't they already there?
Probably.
Atherton, a gentleman got permission from the select board about three years ago, he's got a house down there.
Right.
Yeah.
Very close to the Lebanon line, it's, it's in Enfield, but it's very close.
I think a strongly worded letter about preserving the trail connections is about as far as we can go.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, I agree.
But that should be our focus, I think.
We don't wanna become a party to the lawsuit.
We are just an interested neighbor. But this is something that does, you know, have regional impact.
Yeah.
Well, Linda, you can speak to it, there's the old county road that goes up right near Linda's house.
Right.
Goes up, uh, in Enfield and then crosses very quickly into Lebanon.
Yeah.
But when it hits the Hanover line very quickly.
Right.
Gone, it's done. I think that you could still go through, but only on foot. I don't think they'll allow any vehicles.
Yeah, there's a sign there.
It's foot traffic only.
The people owners are very nice and welcoming to people.
That's good.
I, I haven't met them, I only met them online that time we had. Uh, the woman there, but, uh, Alf is, walks up there a lot and he met them. You know, with friends, with bicycles or skiing or hiking.
Yep.
They do come out and apparently use that little cabin and it's just their family playground.
It's nice to keep some of that stuff.
It is.
Even, even as the upper valley grows and becomes more populated.
Class A trail does include horses.
It's kinda what people, at least the way we're thinking of it, what people are looking for. It's what makes Enfield, Enfield.
Uh, this. I guess I didn't read all the words too, never mind. To read that again.
Okay. Anything else on the Lebanon class six roads issue? Moving along, uh, old business. Tim has put together a incredibly detailed survey of building heights. And also of zoning height regulations in a lot of different surrounding towns. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tim and let Tim go over the, the high points of your report.
Okay, um.
The high points, yes.
Only the high points.
I, I was gonna say, if, if, if everyone's read it.
Yeah.
Then we just talk about it.
Yep.
No need for me to read any of it.
Okay.
Did everyone get a chance to review it at least briefly?
Yep, I did, I did. Appreciate it folks, too, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
This is great.
Yeah, it is.
So, um. I certainly was surprised that some of the findings were, were, were any of you surprised?
I was surprised that the, the Copeland block is only thirty four to thirty six feet.
Yeah, that's from the street level.
On the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was hard to measure, cause I had to.
Yeah.
Width of the brick and then.
Yeah.
Count the bricks right.
Is that how you did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, cause it's only three stories.
Yeah.
But those, those are pretty high ceilings.
Yeah, not really. You get up to the third floor, they're really not, cause.
Right.
CTV's up on the third floor, they're not, they're. Normal ceilings like this.
Okay, I, I looked at space on the second floor, I think they were like nine or ten foot.
Yeah.
I just assumed the third was, was like it. So, you know, we don't have any skyscrapers. And.
Just a great stone building.
Just, yeah, just, just the great stone building. And fortunately, it's not us that has to decide whether that's a. An example that can be used for other buildings. But, you know, it, it seems, seems to me that. You know, somewhere around thirty five to forty feet seems to be the average maximum height. Not only in our town, but in a lot of other towns that don't include. Hanover and Lebanon.
Lebanon, yeah. The only thing I guess that I do like with some of the regulations is they say, okay, it's thirty five feet, but you can go up to. Say forty five with a special exception, as opposed to a variance.
Uh huh.
And I think that's a, that's an idea that we don't really use a lot, the special exception. You know, in a lot of our ordinances where it's not as strict. And, you know, and, you know, I think it's Hanover that says you have to have approval from the fire department.
Yeah.
Uh, which is another good one.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, so that it's not a case of everybody's. If I, if I, if it's a thirty five and I wanna go to forty, I don't have to go through the entire variance. Hearing, I can go through the special exception, which isn't as strenuous with the zoning law.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with what Dan said, um. Making everybody go through a variance for a five foot. You know, increase in height because that makes the difference between a. Project that's viable and a project that is not viable or would feel crap to live in or whatever. I, I think we should do it on a special exception basis rather than a variance.
I think the, um. One, one of the constraints that. The, the height limits seems to impose is, is. Art, is architectural and, you know, you, you don't need the really, really steep roof.
Right.
But some designs just demand is to look good.
Yeah.
Architect needs to have the. You know, if we want good looking buildings, we need to give them room to do things like that. Um, I was thinking, my conclusion was very similar. Let's suggest, uh, forty feet be our, our base, our base, that. Means all of the buildings, pretty much except for one or two, or, you know, all the way down Main Street are gonna fit. Under that within a foot or two. And, uh. If anybody wanted to build a. Thirty eight foot building right next to say where Revision Energy is. Uh, that would not look out of place at all.
Right.
Keller, would he have done something different in the apartment building across? I don't know, the, it looks good. My opinion, what he, what he's done there, but. He might have gone a, another story. Which wouldn't have looked out of place.
Or he might have put the parking underground, put it, put the parking.
That underneath.
Underneath to get that, he would have.
Daniel New Hampshire wouldn't give him the continuous curb cut.
Right, that was the problem there.
That was his original.
Yeah.
Thought.
What is it?
But I like the, uh, the notion that. Whenever we set the base at. That, yeah, you can go another five feet by special exception or, or pick a number, but.
Yeah.
Tim, the perennial question, where would you measure from and where would you measure to?
Well. Since, since the fire department issue is no longer pertinent. I, I, I think you measure it, that. At where the. The, the ground floor is, if it's, it, it, it has a story below grade that is. Open to, open to grade.
Yep.
Then that's where you, you measure from. So the parking garage, for instance, if it was sat down below grade, then, okay. I don't, I don't know that it. I'm not sure it really matters so much, you know, you wanna get. With forty feet, you're gonna be able to do quite a bit. And you wouldn't, I don't think the idea is to have a forty foot building. That's above grade on three sides, or maybe even one side, say that one facing the road. And then the back of it. Be an additional ten feet. Uh, that seems a little contrary to what we're trying to do here. Again, I think forty feet's gonna get just about anything, anybody wanna do. Now, what was the, uh, there was another. I would, I don't, I hesitate to bring up the Laramie project, but there's one thing that caught my eye there, they. The townhouses in there, what was the height on those, do you know?
I think it was about forty, it was slightly higher than the thirty five, yeah.
Yeah, so for example, there's townhouses that was, they had a garage and two floors, I think, plus the peak druth. Seemed to work. So, uh, it's. I don't know how you'd word that, but I would say probably. Decide with the most exposed. Uh, wall, wall face or something like that.
To the peak of the roof.
To the ridge line, peak of the.
The fire people said it had to do with. The side accessing, the, the, the structure access, the structure.
Well, they don't have any concern anymore about the height of the building.
Because they'd call Lebanon?
Yeah, cause.
And, and be, and because new construction, if it's a multi-unit place. There are fire codes that are, I think, forty five minutes between units. So in forty five minutes, Lebanon and Hanover could probably get here.
And there's sprinklers.
And there's sprinklers, yeah.
The building lights its own fire.
Building lights its own fire.
And is the, the law in the book still thirty-five feet?
Which means that a lot of our buildings don't conform.
I think my house is thirty-eight feet.
It could very well be. You got two full stories and a large attic.
And I do know from the. Of the attic. To the ridge line is sixteen feet in the attic of the big part.
Yeah, that's humongous.
Yeah.
It's beautiful up there.
But you're grand, you're grandfathered, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, but no, but it puts in perspective what the size is.
Yeah, that's the kind of.
That's the size we're talking about.
And that's really. Not too objectionable.
No.
Well, from a historical perspective, it's just another example, you couldn't build the Enfield village we have today.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Nor could you build in the Great Stone Wall.
Right, right.
One of our most famous structures in the whole town.
Mm-hmm, right. And I do very much like the idea of allowing. Some flexibility, particularly for architectural stuff like.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, having the right pitch on a roof is visually noticeable.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I wondered the, the little three-story building across from the Methodist Church.
Right, yeah.
Would they have put a steeper pitch on that roof? I don't know, I think it looks pretty good.
Well, they did a very good job, but you're correct, that's like a good example of what would they have done if they'd had the flexibility.
I like, I like what Dan had to say too, I think. Too often in infield, we use the variance as a zoning tool. Where it's really only meant to be. Rare, you know, you guys know the variance criteria is sort of.
Yeah.
So I would even, instead of a special exception. I'm kinda leaning towards this new conditional use permit that our contractors are recommending for other things. That it comes to you guys as, is this appropriate in this location kind of thing? And there's some subjectiveness to it. If it's in a neighborhood, we talked about, you know, uh, something higher, all the houses are at this level.
Right.
And you wanna go up higher in this neighborhood, probably not a good idea, cause we want it to kind of look like the neighborhood. But in a case where it's out on seventy-seven acres, that is at least a thousand feet from anybody. Do we have to be so rigid? I don't know, I mean, that's your, that's obviously the town's call. So. I was, I was involved with Lebanon, this, they, they had the same conversation going there and, you know, it came up a bunch of times. You couldn't build the Whipple block.
Right, right.
Which is, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Right there by Salt Hill, you know, all those buildings are five stories and pretty good size and, and they're downtown.
The town offices in Lebanon would not be.
Yeah, City Hall.
The City Hall is probably.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, that whole. So to me, a little higher in the, in that area is okay, but.
Right.
Out in, you know, poverty lane is probably not, you know, or something like that, so.
What is it up? So, so tell us about conditional use permit. Uh, what, I don't quite get the, the difference between that and a special exception, I realize you don't have to go to the, the ZVA, but. That's a board and we're a board.
Yes.
Probably no different.
Yes.
Conversation, but.
That is, I think that's the biggest thing is it's meant to kind of streamline it, so come see you guys with site plan, you can do it sort of simultaneous. Uh, in, in one meeting instead of two. But I also think, I mean, if you, if you read the criteria for special exception. You know, it's not, it's not as difficult as variance, but it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's kind of designed to be. This really, you know, like.
It's a barrier, it's a pause point.
Yeah.
And from, from my point of view, having a special exception. Be granted by this board as part of site plan or subdivision, whichever. Um, makes a lot more sense than going to a zoning board. Because I, I think. We have a little bit more expertise in general in dealing with this kind of stuff. And I think in terms of a particular project. We would also be able to look at the whole thing in. The context of, of the whole town, whereas for a zoning appeal. Um, or rather, whereas for a variance. Um, it's a higher bar and the ZBA. Has to focus pretty narrowly on the project. And its immediate neighborhood. Plus, the other. Bonus is that our decisions are appealable to the ZBA. Which means that if an applicant doesn't like what we say. They can then go to the ZBA and have them hear it. The way it exists now with a variance, if the ZBA rules against the applicant. The only practical next step for them is to go to court. So it, it makes it a little bit more applicant friendly. And I would definitely be in favor of special exception, conditional use. Um, just expanding the use of both of those in our, in our new zoning regs.
So would you go, uh. Thirty-five feet and then our board could agree to allow forty?
Yeah.
Or would you start at forty and?
Hell, yeah, whatever we, whatever the baseline we establish, you know. And then we can do a condition loose probably to forty-five, and then we can do a special exception to fifty. And then a variance to go to sixty.
Yeah. I think you started forty, cause that, I mean, you've kind of demonstrated that that's really.
That's what.
Yeah. And so you're still matching what's in town by going to forty.
Right, and we wanna say that for the entire town or just for our central business district?
That's the baseline for the entire.
Bottom line for the town.
Yep.
Yeah, cause those, those two and a half three-story buildings.
I think.
All over the place.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think the only group that we might wanna talk to separately, might be the lakes. And the visual impact from the.
Yeah.
The walk to the shoreline.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll have an opportunity to do that. I think that's like the one spot where the height might be.
Yeah, if you're, if you're right, not right on the lane. And you're behind it, and somebody puts a forty footer in front of you, then.
Right, or even just the view, if you're out on the lake, the view to the shoreline.
Yeah.
And now there's a row of twenty-five foot building and a row of forty foot ones behind them. Anyway, it's a little, that's a unique situation.
Right.
Um, yeah, I wasn't like, actually, if you look at the last page of Plainfields, I know that they are talking about ZVA, but they kind of give some examples, probably you might think about. Special exceptions, you know, they say. Um, you know, set, they, they outlines, you set back the property line considerations. Um, and they're talking about non, you know, they're talking about architectural details, you know, cupolas.
Yeah.
And steeples and silos and.
Right.
So there's, you know, there's already some language in other places that kind of. Accomplish, you know, so giving the framework for when you would give one of those.
Right.
Uh, exceptions to go. So. Forty feet to base, forty-five, this board could approve up, up to forty-five. Additional use permit.
Yeah.
And then you go to the ZVA.
Or a special.
Or a special exception.
Well, okay, I mean, the key there is, I mean, if, if it's special exception, you gotta write that into your ordinance, it's, it's.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Gotta be a special.
Don't write it in, then it's gonna be a variance.
Right. Well, but, I mean, you get over forty-five feet, you begin to really.
Yeah. You're talking, it should, you're right, and if, over forty-five, you probably should go and get a variance.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Enfield Village School is just forty feet.
Yep.
Yeah, that hip roof is, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you said you got that number off of actual as-built prints, right?
It was telephoned to me from the SAU office, I didn't actually look at them. And, and there is probably some question as to whether the. Cause there's a, there's the ground floor is partially above grade.
Right, right.
Pretty high, I'm not sure, it could be that's like four additional feet. It could be forty-four, forty-five. I mean, there's no way to measure it without with a hip roof, you can score it, there's no way to get the.
But, you know, I, I think traditionally, public buildings, um.
And churches.
And, and churches.
Yeah.
Tend, tend to be more authoritative by, by their mass.
Yeah.
By their size, so.
If a church came in, I don't think we can stop, and we now, the way that the state laws are written, I don't think we can stop.
Uh, uh, the Hanover case you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. I'm, I'm hoping that that gets, that that gets changed.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we've kind of. Jumped over a pretty big hurdle that we've been talking about for the last year or so.
It's probably something we should talk about on Saturday.
Oh, definitely.
Stay at Friday.
Definitely.
Saturday with.
Definitely, but we at least have.
We've got.
And a consensus from the board.
Yeah.
Which is more than we've had, uh, in the last year and a half that we've been talking about it, so.
Thanks to, thanks, Tim.
I, I consider this to be ma- a major step forward.
Yeah. Um, great work.
Okay, we have three other things under new business.
Old business.
Old business. And the next one is zoning order structures work group report. Is there a report on that?
Well, there is a worker. Just me again, um, uh. So. Same question I had last meeting is if you had a chance to look at any of the ordinance. One of them strikes you as being, wow. Not, not the provisions for the districts and so forth, but the structure of the ordinance, how it's kind of laid out, put together. One of those grabs you. That maybe we could use as a template. Say so, uh. Send Dave an email, say something tonight, whatever. We'll take a peek at it. I do have one, I think, in my opinions. Probably. Scary to hear, but, uh, I think the Lebanon ordinance is actually. What, what I liked about it was that. Clearly, they've had their attorneys and their planners and their professionals all over that thing from one end to the other. So the way it's worded. And things like the district boundaries and what you do for when the boundary is. You know, crosses a river or whatever, it, it's just they. They've really flushed it out, it seemed. Whereas the Hanover ordinance. Been thick for one reason, but the other is the, and it work, when it starts off in the very beginning saying how. How we're gonna come down on you hard and we're gonna. That and before you even get into.
What they are. Yeah.
So anyway, that's, that's all I've.
I, I.
So far.
I agree with you, Tim, cause if you look at some of the smaller towns, like, uh, Cornish's, I think it was, and Springfield's. They're very scatter shot.
They're nothing.
There's nothing there, it's like. If you were to deny it, it would get overturned every time because there's nothing there. It says, we wanna have this. It's like the old, that we keep talking about rural character, tell me what it is.
It, it's like, it's the first attempt at zoning.
Right.
So they went easy.
Yeah.
And maybe they stayed there for the next twenty years without any amendments at all.
Yeah.
Um, did we communicate last time about. The rural character concern that we all had and how people are going to express it.
Things wondered if there was a way to gather a definition from community members regarding the concept. Of preserving rural character. Um. And I made a note to read you something. The Heritage Commission's mission statement is. The Enfield Heritage Commission will properly recognize, protect, promote. And promote the historic and es- eh. Aesthetic resources that are significant to our community, be they natural. Built or cultural, the commission will work cooperatively with other educational and civic organizations. In fulfilling this mission. And, um, I know that's a little vague. But I really think that as a board, the planning board should. Be working on a list of. Concepts we like. Since there's hesitancy to make rules or regulations about it. If you don't have a list of, that you can show someone that says, well, these are things that. Make our town special and. Without making it a law or a requirement. But it gives Rob a list of things that if someone comes in and wants to push every button. There's, say, well, you know, that doesn't really fit in on Main Street. We, we would rather you do this. And, and I know the, the response to that last time was, well, why bother if there's no consequence? But, but I think it would help.
Okay, the trick there is to get the consensus, now everybody's got a different idea of what looks good, you know?
Yeah, to, to answer the original.
Hard part.
To answer the original question of how we can. Obtain input on our two forums, um, I posed that question to Steve Whitman. At a. Zoom call that we had following our previous planning board meeting. And what he came back at me with was, okay, we will have a table. With a large piece of paper on it and we will be asking people to. Answer the question by writing down on this piece of paper. Like, you know, a butcher block, a butcher roll of paper or something. Um, what their idea of rural character is, and then they will compile it and. Perhaps make, um, one of those word charts that Lindsay. Has shown us in the past where the largest appearing words are. The ones that were mentioned by the most people and the smallest type is, you know, what was mentioned by one or two people. So that's what they have planned for the forum on Saturday and Thursday. And hopefully that will get us at least a little bit closer to.
And they'll be there this Thursday?
Oh, yes, and Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you didn't know that?
Yeah.
No, I didn't.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
We, we're paying, we're paying the, the big bucks to do this.
So nervous about possibly being a little late if that guy.
Okay, no, they're, they're gonna have, I think, at least three people. Steve, um, Steve and Mark and.
Liz.
Liz, Liz Kelly.
I think Crystal will be.
Crystal's coming too.
Yep.
I mean, they're, they're, they're bringing out all of their forces.
All of them, all the stops.
Plus, you know, plus us, plus people from the master plan task force. Um.
There should be something on tomorrow's listserv to, to.
Remind.
Remind.
We just put it up tonight, I don't know, I saw it.
Oh, no.
Now, I, I don't know how this thing is gonna actually. Come off, but I, I, I was envisioning that there's probably opportunities for each of us to engage in private conversations. With people off to the side.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why we wanna be there, so we can talk to people.
Yeah, and, and, and so what I. Hope to do is, is engage folks in that very question and. You know, talk about, okay, what if, I, 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 I think I wanna phrase it. We know we're gonna get more growth in the town. What in the rural areas is an acceptable way to do that? You know, what, what can you live with?
Mm-hmm.
Still preserve the rural character and, you know, allow the growth, and what do you wanna see? Uh, and try to get them to narrow down to a really specific answer.
Yeah.
See where that goes, but.
Yeah, at least we'll get people thinking about it.
Cause we're gonna have.
Because we're gonna have to be, when we do the, the zoning, gonna have to be more specific than using the term rural character. Because there's now been two cases that the towns, the variants, they. We, they rejected the variances because, and in their. Uh, rejection, they said it does not meet the rural character of the area. And the housing. No, no, statewide, statewide, and the Housing Appeals Board overturned. The, the zoning board because they said that's a nebulous term. And what I say is rural character, you say is rural characters, could, could be completely different. One of them was a golf course in Franklin. They wanted to put solar panel, solar up there, and it was rejected because it does not meet the rural character of the area. Well, that just. That blew them away, the Housing Appeal Board, they said, wait a minute. It doesn't work, you can't use that term as a rejection, there has to be another reason you do reject something. Than someone's subjective term, rural character.
Although I suppose if we take the trouble to put some attributes. Connected to rural character. We would be on sound footing when we approve or disapprove of a particular application. So, get, getting the town to agree on that will not be an easy task. But if we, if we can reach that point, we'll be in a whole lot better shape. In terms of managing growth here.
And zoning board will be in a better shape.
Yes. So. What?
Minutes.
Minute, we're not finished. We're only an hour and fifteen minutes into the meeting.
With, with, uh, with your. Guidance of mission, um, how about I take that Lebanon zoning ordinance, strip out all the. District stuff that they got in there, all their things that don't apply. And just, uh, you know, do the old find and replace, you know, then feel whatever. Ship it to you. See what you think, is that a way to start this?
Yeah, just, you know, get, get it down to a skeleton. A real bare bones.
Template that we.
Template.
You could, you could also take the conservation district and fill out the template for that as an example, which how it would work for Enfield. Because we're not really talking about changes to the conservation district. So, that'd be, you know.
That's true, yeah.
It wouldn't be any lost work, hopefully.
One thing I really liked in a couple of them that were produced, that were presented or available to public PDF format. When you encounter a term. That is defined in the definitions, it's, it's in bold, and you can actually click on it. Well, you know, we're, I think, we did that on the master plan, on the web version, PDF version too. And I see no reason why we should not. Take advantage of the technology that exists, and hyperlinks are something that I think. Most people are used to at this point, and we shall include them.
And it works for the applicants.
It works for everybody. You know, I mean, we can even hyperlink to RSA's. Which, you know, will, will.
We see what you guys write. We might not want to hyperlink.
Hey, we just do enabling legislation. Um, so anyhow, uh. Any more comments on the. Structure of whatever we wind up doing? Okay, so, moving along, uh. Proposed forum for Lake Shore District or Districts.
Well, now that I get the pipe thing out of the way, I can focus on a little bit, but I have been talking to people, some new people. I met a couple more people from the museum and. Got a email dialogue going on with one of the homeowner association presidents and so forth, so. I think the next meeting I'll have a, an outline anyway of how, how we might pull that off and.
I've also communicated with both Lake Association Presidents. This is Glenn Green for Crystal Lake, and it's Martha Rich for, uh, Mascoma. And they're very much ready to work with us, we just need to tell them when and where to.
You and I should.
Yeah. So, the question is, do we do it later this month, do we till June? But we, we can communicate too with Steve and, and Mark tomorrow. At our forum and say, eh, see if they want to be involved in that at all, see if they want to sort of. Listen in on that conversation or be a part of the conversation that would probably. But the, the moral of the story is, I think both associations are very much interested in working with us. Uh, actually, Dan Regan, who was sitting right here just a little while ago, looking more and more likely like he will be the next president of Crystal Lake. Association, I think Glenn is ready to pass the reins.
Have we got any hearings in two weeks?
Don't think so, nothing, no, no applications, there was talk about a voluntary merger today, but. The woman that came in, um, and talked to me, realized that the deeds don't match, and I said. Don't come see us until the deeds match because the registry will reject a merger if the, if the deeds don't match. So, that one is probably gonna happen sometime next month. Uh, I can say. Uh, that I've communicated with Steve Schneider of Eastman. He's planning to come to your next meeting, so he'll, he'll be an agenda item to talk about Eastman.
Okay.
And I said, do you have people that you want to bring with you or anything? He said, I don't know, I think I, I'll come to the first one. He's very much empowered as their president and CEO to communicate, so I think. It'll certainly be, I mean, I've explained what we've talked about here in these meetings, how we're sort of leaning towards kind of laissez faire. You guys regulate yourselves in that, in that instance, so Eastman specifically. And he's kind of, I think he's on board with that, I think he thinks that's a good idea. Obviously, they have way more strict. Regulations from their HOA than we would ever have in Arizona, I mean, you can't. You can't mow your lawn on a Saturday or Sunday or something, there's like, things like that, there's paint colors and roof slopes and all that kind of stuff that goes in as well. So, it's pretty aggressive, pretty aggressive. The only work that I've done in Eastman since I've been here is a few setback issues. But both times it was, uh, zoning variances were granted, pretty much out of hand for them because. They made good cases for what they needed, it was a lot of ledge in.
Yeah, we, we did a couple, probably close to ten years ago, eh, that were steep slope issues.
Did, did they, did they purchase?
Well, we can talk about that when he, he's here.
Okay. Um, for some reason, I'm not seeing minutes, previous minutes on the agenda, it's not on the second page either.
Re- and approve, meeting in minutes, April twenty fourth.
There they are.
Oh, no, that says next meeting.
That says next meeting in a jargon.
Go back up.
Under Induce Administrators Report.
Yeah, they were earlier in the.
I skipped that.
That's why I mentioned it.
Figured you were doing it for.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes. Okay, and put them on the table.
Second, is there any discussion on the minutes?
I didn't find any.
I saw Flanders. I just showed my app of rural character, one of the reasons we bought our house, where we bought it, was because I could sit on my deck and see a big red barn. Horses in the pasture, and I said, this has got rural character. I don't want to see it go away. I don't want to see Billy Warren, I tried to buy the product in Billy Warren because I didn't want to see houses going in there, control it myself, you know, but. He's, he's not making a lot of progress there, so. But anyway, I was just.
That's a really good example.
Yeah, some of those, if you can find areas in town, take pictures of them.
You want to turn, turn the. Turn the computer around and let the rest of us see.
Here you've got.
Oh, that's gorgeous, yeah.
You've got what could be a setting on any country road, right downtown in the village. The street from Jake's.
Can we pass the standard?
Yep, so what do you do about that? We've got Phil's interests, and then you've got quarter acre zoning, or perhaps no acre zoning and. Quarter sewer, middle of the village.
Well, I mean, thi- this is a, this is my neighboring property, yeah, as well, um. And it's one where to me, there's the obvious solution is you. Have higher density right next to Maple Street where there's already buildings, and you leave the field for other uses. Because the water and sewer on Maple Street already connected. And you have the house and the barn, so if somebody wanted to add housing, the place to do it is. At the Maple Street side of the lot.
Right, yeah, right, right.
Rather than subdividing, so allowing the, maybe two build, you know, this gets into the principal building thing, like maybe allowing two buildings right there versus. You know, subdividing and putting road through is a better solution.
Or cluster develop.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, yeah.
But you know what I'm saying, like, like.
Right.
Like, high density on the Maple Street side, and I say that as being directly across the street from that.
Yeah.
But if you think about it from the town's perspective and from the rural character perspective. That's how you do it, you put the, you put the housing on the street.
Where the infrastructure is, right, close to the road, absolutely.
Find beautiful things in Enfield as you go away for a few months, and then you drive home. And you say, oh, my gosh, it's green here, there are trees, and it's so nice and.
Yes.
And then we sit on our back porch, and people think, oh, she lives right on the road. Yeah, I do, but you don't see me on the front porch. On the back porch, I watch the hawks chased by the crows and. The birds and look up the hill and.
Welcome home.
Yeah, thanks.
So, we.
I have a motion on the floor.
We, we got sidetracked by Linda again. Okay, well, okay, they, they, they sidetracked us, but it was Linda who wanted to talk about the minutes. And then she went off on a riff about how beautiful, uh, we are here in Enfield.
Well, it was the pictures, Phil's pictures reminded me of how it's rural and so nice and.
Anyhow, back on topic, people. I, I think I heard Dan make a motion to accept the minutes as written, but I don't think, okay, now we've got a second, all in favor? I closed abstentions. All right, minutes are accepted as written. Yes, sir.
But I think Phil has really introduced a very, very difficult. Situation to, for us to resolve. Because where we've marked out the potential boundary for the village. Suggests that that's where we want development. And it's. Town water and sewer. I mean, I look at that property as much as, and I've enjoyed that, I used to live there right next to that red barn, under it actually. And in the woodshed, it was a great place to be. And the, uh. But on the other hand. I- if, if a developer bought that and, and wanted to put a neighborhood in there. I mean, that's how all the other neighborhoods in town got, got built in the village, it was that very scenario. And I, I don't know how you would. Write rules for the village that would exclude, uh, a, a field. There's one on Maple, May Street, it's very similar to that, Dick Hall used to own, beautiful piece of property. Same question. So, that's, we're gonna have to wrestle with that. But we are.
Really appreciate your, your view on that. I, I, I think what Eric said provides. At least for me, provides somewhat of a framework, is that if you've got a big, open tract of land. Which is next to a pretty intensely developed area of town. Then you write the zoning regs so that any new development is. Towards the road, is a cluster development, maintains X percentage of. Open land or common land, and I, I don't think it's an impossibility. To, to define it and to write a regulation that would achieve the kind of balance. That we think we're looking for.
I have a technical question, I know we can allow cluster developments, can we require it?
Yes, we do now.
We can.
Anything over.
Well, we could think, think about lots like that. You are required to. Get the same housing density or maybe a bonus or, or something, but you're required to build it within. Some distance of.
Two hundred feet of the road or whatever it is.
Yeah, or the public infrastructure, or, you know, I, I don't know what the answer there is, but, I mean, we could consider that, which would.
Right, because in.
Somewhat address both of those scenarios.
Because in that specific area. To say we don't want to have development would be against our master plan. Which says, that's where we want to have.
Right, farms is right above this.
I know. But to say that we want to maintain, you know, we want to maintain the rural character.
You kept saying that, and what was my response last time? There's thirty-six other pages in that master plan. And everybody's hanging their hat on, we must maintain our rural character. And completely ignore the other thing, including future development maps.
And Bill Warren's property was owned by Henry Laramie, the Laramie, the original. Henry wanted to give that land, or he wanted the town to buy it, and he wanted it to be a park. So that the kids could go sledding there in the w- in the winter like he did. And he said it isn't worth much because it's very wet. And it has those rights of way.
Right away from Liberty Utilities.
Right, and so, uh, but the town wouldn't agree to pay him anything for it. So, so he sold it, but, um. You know, he thought it was a great park, a great place for kids to run around and play. And, um. It would be nice to be able to do that, of course, you could always offer, the town could offer Bill to, to buy development rights. That's another way to do it.
Um, I'm still working on Billy Warren.
Well, I like Eric's approach, and I wonder if, and I know we're not gonna be able to probably deal with the, the. The two rural districts in any detailed way, this crack at it, but, you know, the, the concept of. If you've got a lot over a certain acre, acreage. It seems like the public interest is to main, is to maintain as much of that as open unimproved land as possible. Open either fields or forests, but you know what I mean? For a variety of reasons, and so. I almost see the ordinance eventually having a provision where. You're allowed to develop twenty percent of your property. Eighty percent of it has to remain, maintain, may remain in a contiguous. Undeveloped state. You know, subject to agricultural usage, recreation, things like that.
Would you go one step further? And we'll give you a bonus if you do that.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
I would simply say, on that twenty acres then, uh, do what you will.
Right.
Uh, you don't have town water and sewer, so there's a lot of self limiting factor there in the first place. Most of them developers are gonna keep that as tight as possible, they don't want to go push dirt around over the whole twenty acres.
They don't want to build roads to town standards.
Right. No kidding. And so, but, but at the end of the day, in, in a rural area.
if you drive by and you see this little cluster of, say, twenty-five homes. And maybe you can't even see the land behind it that was preserved for the, for the trees, or you just see trees. My question is, are we accomplishing that rural character preservation goal or? Um, or not, because otherwise, with presence on, you're gonna end up with a lot like, like a number of these where they're, they're, they're cut into little slivers.
Right, yeah.
The open land is un- under the control of dozens of different owners.
Hmm.
You can't, they can't get together on a timber harvesting.
Right.
Operation, wildlife preservation scheme, whatever. So anyway, but I can see that perhaps applying on lots in the village like Phil's point, yeah.
I'm gonna go one step further. Will you give me a bonus if I have a two hundred foot setback?
I was gonna, I was gonna say that, because if you have a two hundred foot front setback, you can have your, your street, you can have woodland. And then you have your housing with, you know, the yards and whatever. And that gives you your housing density, plus it gives you, as you ride by, it gives you the feeling that you're on a rural road that's not developed.
Yeah.
And, and, and maybe you even do like you do with our Route Four District. And you say, rather than each property having its own curb cut, you have maybe one or two or three entrance roads.
Yeah, a horse trading like that for what we end up with, I'm sure we're gonna end up with a problem ours.
Yeah.
You're describing.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you give the guy, uh, the developer, uh, density bonus.
I know, well, you give him a, you give him a reason to develop it.
You, you give, you give him something, you know, there, there, there's gotta be a bone in it for the developer, whether, whether it's some sort of a, a density bonus or a tax break for X number of years or whatever.
Careful of that.
Well, hey, I, I didn't say I supported that, I'm just saying that that's
Yeah.
Something that can be done.
Well, as you know, I'm always persuadable, but that's gonna be a tough argument for me to buy is, is, is why a density bonus? When you, if you're gonna be satisfied in the end with more houses there, then just start off in the get-go saying that's what you can do. I don't.
No, I'm just throwing him on the table as.
Yeah.
You know? Yep, doesn't mean I agree with him either, but you're right, at some point, somebody's gonna wanna bone.
Yeah.
Right.
And if you can.
Cause you're taking.
If you can give him a bone that doesn't cost too much.
Right.
Um, it, it becomes a win-win situation. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk about that tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
We oughta talk about stuff like.
Definitely.
Sure again.
Yeah.
Does this look like rural character?
Um, maybe Rob could even print off a couple of copies of that picture.
I could print a copy off.
Yeah.
Does this look like rural character to you?
Well, it's in the village.
Yeah. You know, that, that, that would be a very good picture to have on the table where people are gonna write, what's rural character?
Right, yeah. I can do that.
Okay.
You guys, take it tomorrow night.
You know, and it could, eh, if you give a developer free rein there. I bet you because of, like, cause I know that, that land is very wet.
Especially the last couple of years.
It probably would self-limit to more or less what we're hoping.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Cause you're gonna have to mitigate the wetlands.
Yeah. A- a- as a, an academic exercise that the people of Enfield can do tomorrow and Saturday, without getting into wetlands and self mitigation. Um, I think that would be an absolutely excellent exercise.
Yep.
And then some questions around, what would you allow in that field?
Right.
What if it was full of solar panels? If it was full of houses, if it was full of pigs? You know.
Good, was full of horses, was funny.
No, I, I.
Good questions to ask.
Horses and turkeys.
It was.
Right. And there were, when we first moved there, there were like twenty-five horses out there and seventy-five turkeys following them around eating the oats.
Yeah, must've been nice.
It was funny.
It was.
Yeah.
Wild turkeys.
Oh, yeah.
Wild turkeys, seventy, we counted seventy-five one afternoon.
Wow.
But they were, they were clearly finding food in the horse manor.
Yeah.
Corn, oats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else anybody would like to talk about tonight, or should we call it a night?
I move, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? I, I closed abstentions. We adjourned at, looks to me like about eight oh seven. I thought this was a very productive meeting. We, uh, we had really good discussions, and I think we into some agreement.